So let me just real quick for Jerry's benefit, let me read through the how this works.
Who's Jerry?
Jerry Sexton Pipeline Task Force.
Okay.
He identified himself there. Jerry, you'll be muted during the meeting when the board is talking. For each agenda item that requires a board vote, you'll be unmuted and given an opportunity to comment and ask questions. And when you do wish to make a comment, Susan will unmute you must state your. And otherwise, folks who are watching this on live stream, they can submit questions by email to info@eastkosian.org. Again, eastkosian.org and Susan will flag them and bring them to the board's attention during the public comment period. Participants should turn down the volume if they are live streaming the YouTube because there is about a 15 second delay.
You ready for me, John?
Yep.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the June 9th meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Thank you very much, John, for that summary. I will call the meeting to order and the first item to do is the Pledge Allegiance. I will lead that in that and then it'll be a moment of silence and I would ask Dave Shewie to do that also. So try to stay together and we'll go to start one, two, three. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic which stands one nation under God. Indivisible, liberate, justice for all.
David? Please observe a moment of silence in honor of those who go in harm's way every day, our police, our emergency medical services, those who serve in the military and our healthcare workers. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Everybody ready to go? The first thing is to announce that the meeting is being livestreamed on YouTube. There is no public hearing now. There will be an opportunity at the end for those that had listened to John to make their comments. Regarding the chairman's report, we did meet in an executive session tonight to discuss a personnel matter. And the planning commission meeting, which was last Wednesday, scheduled to be last Wednesday, has been moved to June 17th at 7:00 PM. There are no emergency services reports tonight and there is a financial report. John, you want to go over that, please?
Sure. So as of May 31st, the general fund had a surplus of $1.124 million, which is not unusual at this time because of how the cash flow works with real estate tax payments front loaded in the beginning. But we do have a negative budget variance compared to the year-to-date budget of $234,181. Most of that can be explained away because of the change in the deadline for earned income tax to July 15th. I compare, we would have collected from what's called quarter five remittances, i.e. remittances that are due to the filing deadline. And we're about $200,000 behind where we would be if or where we have been in years past when there's the April 15th. So again, to reiterate, you know, we are expecting there to be slowdown in EIT receipts because of the coronavirus and the ensuing recession. But the debt we're seeing now is just a tight issue because of the change in the due date.
John, just as a matter of curiosity, I don't know if it's happening to everybody else, but you're hiccuping when you're talking. You go in and out as far as my line anyway. I don't know if everybody else is having the same problem, but.
I heard the same hiccuping, but that's, I got the gist of it. I heard most of it.
Okay.
Something's going on.
Well, I'll do the best I can. If you guys, let me just finish my spiel and I'll be done soon.
Yep, that's fine.
On the, you know, we got, I will observe, you know, real estate property transfer taxes, you know, well below where we expected it to be, which isn't a surprise. But the, we just got the May releases from the transfer tax report and it was $41,000, which is less than it would be in a normal May. But is, you know, isn't terrible. There were a lot of properties in Hershey's Mill villages that sold. A couple of, you know, a number of single-family cash homes that sold. So, you know, through the thick of the shutdowns, the continued to function one way or another. So that's, you know, that's good news. I was worried it was really going to fall off a cliff and it hasn't really done that. On the, on the, can you guys not hear me?
I can hear you.
Are you good?
I can hear you.
Going in and out, but I can hear you.
On the expense side, we're, you know, we're under budget across the board. You know, we got lucky with a very mild snow winter. Got some personnel savings in the codes department. And the only, the only, the only department that is over budget is parks, but that's just a function of the work on the trail. Again, probably a timing issue. Nothing really out of the ordinary to report on the other funds. And next month, I'll start to do the year-end projections. So we have the big second quarter report a month from now. Hopefully start to sharpen the pencil about how things are starting to shape out financially for the township.
John, you want to talk about tomorrow now or it'll set later?
Jerry, you're cordially invited to call in at 10 o'clock tomorrow morning to participate in the long-range budget planning session in which we forecast out for 10 years about what we think revenues and expenditures will look like and talk about some fiscal pressures that we are facing. Okay, we have a caller that I'm going to admit in. Caller that just entered the meeting with phone number ending in 475. Can you please state your name?
Christina Morley.
Hi Christina.
Hi Christina.
Hello Christina.
Hello. Sorry, technical difficulty.
Okay, we're ready to go, right? We're all right, Susan?
Yes, we're good.
The next item is this item number nine. It's the approval of the minutes for May 19th and the treasures report for June 4th. I have read carefully the minutes and they seem to be perfectly fine. If anybody has any comments or questions, that's fine. If not, John or David, can you make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a consent agenda motion to accept both the financial report and approve the minutes and the treasurer's report. John, you got?
Is the treasurer's? Mike usually does.
Let me restate that. Let me restate that. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for the May 19th, 2020 meeting as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you very much. Is there any comments or questions from the board? From the audience? Susan?
Any questions from the audience?
No.
Okey dokey. All the question, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? No. Thank you, John. It's four to zero. Mike's not here, I assume. The treasures report, Mike, I know, was going over that and he's not here. Has anybody else gone over it very carefully like Mike does?
And I would just say for the record that it is important every supervisor go over that with a fine.
Well, yeah, I understand that, but there's a different level that you do it when you're responsible for it. I agree with you, John, but I mean, I've looked at it. I didn't see anything, but I don't, I would prefer other people to weigh in on it besides myself.
You're talking about the bills and whatnot?
Yes.
Yeah, I have, I have a couple of things I'd like to bring up.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to, first of all, I'd like to address a small expenditure under Rick's expenses. It's an Apple Music subscription for $10.59. And that turns out to have been something that we no longer need, so that's going away.
That, well, yeah, that's a good point, Michelle. Michelle did point that out to me. We did some research. It was something that Jason had signed up, I think, last fall. We no longer need it. We tried to cancel it today, but unfortunately, we couldn't get it canceled for this month, but we can't get it canceled.
Okay.
So unfortunately, we can't.
And then I had asked for clarification on what the $130 daily local subscription covered. And John got back to me. He said that it is for one copy of one quarter's worth of a subscription for the daily local, which we have to have to be able to prove that we have put the correct notifications in the paper. So I don't have a problem with that. I just wanted to know for the term that it was.
And just to clarify on that, we could, previously, we didn't have a subscription for a while. Get an affidavit signed by the daily locals notary saying, showing that as had run, we're actually saving money because we no longer need service because we can just take it directly from the, from. So that's actually, and I want to give credit where credit's due. That was Susan's idea.
Great.
On a daily basis, saving the township cash money. So good job.
That's great.
I have a question. On the daily local, I realize the paper isn't exactly the most robust paper you're ever going to read. However, there is things that do relate to other townships that show up in there. The question I have isn't so much the money, so to speak, but is it important to be able to stay with that to see if there's anything of value? And if not, then we ought to go the cheapest way possible.
Not sure.
Because daily local is the cheapest way, isn't it?
Yeah, unfortunately.
There's no other newspaper of general circulation except for the Inquirer and that's.
Okay, I mean, we want to leave it the way we are.
Yeah, we need the ads, Marty. I would ask for a friendly amendment to the treasurer's report that the board does not approve. There were two identical, we discovered today, two purchases of a table. So one of the two folding tables purchased from Uline, we do not approve that for $363. For some reason, that just didn't get flagged as a duplicate invoice when we were doing the expenditure register this time.
Speaking of the Uline deluxe folding table, I went online and I found a similar deluxe folding table. A heavy duty, heavyweight portable table for $88.99. And so I would ask that before some of these purchases are simply made through the usual vendors, perhaps it could be that we start thinking a little bit outside of the box and taking five minutes online and shop for another similar item. Because if we could have gotten, if we could have spent $90 on just one, we could have gotten, we could have gotten four of them for the same price.
And either, point certainly taken.
Yeah, I mean, I.
We'll discuss that in the staff meeting tomorrow.
Yeah. I'd like to address batch four of 12, page two. The line item is 4318 Courtney Miller, general expense for the shop, 30 masks for $300. What kind of masks were they?
They were the N95 masks.
Did we find that was an exceptionally high price on those?
Well, at the time, we were the problem just trying to get masks and we needed them for the guys down at the sewer plant.
Okay.
And the guys in the shop.
Okay, fair enough. I'd like to address batch 10 of 12, page seven. The line item 864, $4,070 for lights and equipment on a new truck.
Yes, that was the fit out for one of the new dump trucks that we get of delivery of.
Right.
So the lights, the radios, the county radios and the CB radios.
Okay, so did we know about that extra $4,070 of expenditure when we, when the truck was approved?
Yes, so those items were on the back end, Michelle.
Okay, so, so these items were actually already put into the sinking, this expenditure, excuse me, was put into the sinking fund to cover this amount. Is that correct?
Well, I mean, it's not yet. It's a replacement asset, so we'll decrease the full cost of
Okay.
of all of the, you know, accoutrements that go into the
Okay.
into the truck. I mean, I think, I think to address your concern specifically, I think, and I think this is a good idea, is that when we have a memo for particularly a replacement vehicle,
Yeah.
that we also spell out estimated costs for bells and whistles, if you will, so that the board has a better idea going into it. It's not just the chassis and the engine, but you know, there's additional costs that will go in. So we can just make a mental note, you know, when Mark and I do those memos in the future that we call out those things as well.
Okay, thank you. And then also same batch 10 of 12, page seven, line item 1707, $650 for lettering of the truck. I'd like to see that. Yeah.
That lettering, that was not for just one truck, that was for three trucks.
10 of 12, page seven.
Thank you.
And it's the line item 1707.
Yeah, that was from the screening room for the letters that were cut out for truck 48, 49 and 50.
So this was for three vehicles?
The letters, yeah, they cut the, that's the punch out for the letters. We did pay an invoice for lettering one truck, the guy's labor, when the other two trucks then will pay for that.
So that's done in-house?
No, 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 no.
Okay, so, okay, so I know that it seems like, it might be silly to you, but $650 seems like an awful lot of money for me to be putting East Goshen Township on our vehicles. I would really like to see us moving forward, try to come up with a more creative option, maybe a window decal on the inside window, maybe the interior of the back windshield.
Yeah, I have to disagree. I think that trucks need to be.
Yeah, I have to disagree with that, Michelle.
Yeah, the trucks need to be branded, our trucks, and recognizable and, you know, we're nickel and diming operations now that traditionally I think need to be done, so.
Okay, well, I'm just looking at other.
Why not put a magnet sign on the side then?
Right.
No.
You do it right or don't do it at all.
Well, don't do it at all is an option too.
Not really.
Yeah, but I don't.
The thing we're going to deal with tomorrow is the fact that by 2024, we won't have enough money.
Right.
Yeah, well, tomorrow's tomorrow. I mean, right now, we have equipment and.
And we're not running out of money in 2024.
It's the cleanest equipment I've ever seen in my life on the street until it comes back in and they clean it up for the next day. It's amazing. And I have actually several times over the course of the time I've been supervisor, have been complimented, not me personally, but the Mark and his group have been complimented about the neatness and the cleanliness of the trucks. They can't believe that a public works department can keep a truck that clean. And it's amazing what they do. And I think that, oh, you will find them in places where it's distinguished to have those things on. I don't, I don't see it as a waste myself. Now, it's just me. I mean, other people can have their own opinion, but I don't think it's a waste. I think that whole public works operation is a bonanza for us, for our township in a manner. We do not have many people. We have good equipment. I want to go back to what Michelle made a comment on. On the, on the equipment of trucks, Mark, we had a discussion some time ago, and I don't remember, it was a fair amount of time ago, that if the truck was going to be equipped with the same equipment that it had, you know, on the old truck, we didn't have to put any additional information down. It's only when the truck is being replaced with something beyond what was on the original truck. That's how we used to do, that's how we used to do it. Now, I don't, I mean, we can do it, we can make you put every accessory piece on there that you're going to have and so forth and so on. But I'm just sharing with the group what was decided way back when was to just put on, just notify the board that in addition to what was on the truck before, we're now adding whatever we're adding. That's the way we used to do it. It's up to you guys what way you want to do it. It doesn't matter to me, but that's what we used to do.
And Michelle, just for your, just so you know, I did shop the pricing for a letter and went to Marsh Creek and I went to greeting room.
Okay. I just, I would just like to start thinking about how we're doing things. Can we do them a little differently? They could potentially save us some monies, a little bit of money here and a little bit of money there. I mean, it seems like nothing to spend $363 on the table, but if we could have gotten it for 90, then I wouldn't be so aggravated with a lettering expenditure. See what I'm saying? It's, I just want us to start thinking a little differently than we've been thinking in the past, perhaps, is all.
We'll talk about it in staff meeting. I don't think anybody's going to argue with it. I think our people are very, are careful, but there's always, you can be more careful. And we should try to get it at the lowest possible price we can and we're, because we're in a different ballgame. And you'll notice, you'll see that very clearly tomorrow. And so anything that we could do, I will tell you, Michelle, one of the advantages of having new supervisors come onboard, they're not prejudiced by anything that's taking place ahead of time. You kind of get used to things when you're here for a while. And it, you know, so you got a little, little job for yourself to ask questions that are what seem to be out of the ordinary for us, but aren't really out of the ordinary. So it's not, it's not something, it's, it's not bothering me, I mean, for you to ask the questions. I don't know about the staff, but.
That's why I'm asking the questions, Marty. That's exactly why I'm asking the questions. This is not just status quo for me. It's something that's brand new and sometimes a fresh set of eyes is a good thing. Speaking of which, batch seven of 12, page four, the number is 2257, Thomas Committee Associates Professional Services from last October. And we're getting this bill seven and a half months later. I'd like to see, is there any kind of process that we can put in place where vendors have a certain period of time to issue invoices for payment from the township?
Yeah, I think what we could do, Michelle, is, is we could probably add a sentence to any contract that we enter into that says something along the lines of invoices shall be submitted within 60 days or whatever, 90 days within of completion of services. I couldn't imagine that that would be.
Great. Okay, great. Thank you. I'd like to see something like that happen.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to move that we graciously accept the receipts and approve the expenditures as presented in the expenditure register and summarized in the treasurer's report with the exception of the redundant table and the amount of 362, invoice for a table and the amount of $362.
Yeah, but you also have a double expenditure you got to get out of there.
That's what David just, that's what David.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't pick it up. Okay. Anybody have a second?
I'll second it.
Is there comments or questions from the board? From the audience?
No.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion? Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? No. Four to zero, John. Thank you very much, everybody. I appreciate it. Moving right along. We have no old business, fortunately, but we do have new business, several items of new business. And the first is Jason on the line?
Yep, I'm here.
Jason, it's your turn to talk about the Community Day and Food Festival.
Okay, so just to put everyone kind of like at where we were, we had moved Community Day from June to August to coincide with Food Truck Festival to hopefully get through enough of the COVID and, you know, reduce the curve enough that we could host the event in August. Luck is not on our side, obviously. Governor Wolf, about two weeks ago, adjusted his red, yellow and green and specifics as they pertain to parking wreck events. And so in yellow and also in green, we can only hold events in the park for a maximum of 250 people to also include social distancing and some other considerations. So it doesn't seem like it's in the cards this year for Community Day and Food Truck Festival. The Park Commission and I discussed it last Thursday and given those details, you know, we don't really see there's a way forward for this year. So our recommendation is unfortunately to cancel for 2020.
Yeah, Jason, I don't think you should feel too bad about this because it is what it is. But going over to the, back to the paper again, in this paper again, I do get it at home and I get it for the pure simple reason. I want to read what's going on in other townships. There are a number of townships that have canceled, things like what we're doing. They may name it differently, but the same idea. And it's for the same reason. So everybody's stuck with the same kind of a thing and it's very unfortunate, but it is what it is. But you should be, we appreciate your working up and the work you've put into it. Do you need to talk about anything that now that we're, now that we got the color that we have with respect to your camp? Or did you all do that before?
Well, we approved the camp at the last board meeting, but just a status update, I guess, for camp for the park itself is camp started on June 22nd. They'll be in the park. For the park itself in yellow phase, it's just the trails, open space and tennis pickleball open. And then once we go to green, we can reopen the playground, the sports fields for organized sports play and also the basketball courts. So, so going from red to yellow didn't really change too much in the, in the park amenities. You'll see a real change when we go to green.
Jason, I think you called that lady that we were talking about. Do you want to let everybody know what happened?
Mr. Chair, can I, can I interrupt a minute and make a motion to accept the recommendation of Parks and Recreation Staff to cancel Community Day and the Food Truck Festival for 2020? So we can act on that and then talk more about other issues. Thanks.
Is there a second?
Yes, I'll reluctantly second it. I'm disappointed, but we have to do it.
Yeah, is there any comments or questions from the board?
None.
From the audience?
None.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Four to zero, John. Thank you. The next is a matter that's been discussed a little bit in one either before, after, before, during this meeting. It's the Cadmus Energy Transition Report and the work that was done. John or David, do you guys want to explain what's going on?
Yeah, this is a recommendation from the Sustainability Advisory Committee. And basically, they've, the board has accepted, made a motion to accept the Cadmus report. Just, and that's a formality of just accepting the report because we paid for part of it. And then they asked the Sustainability Advisory Committee to review the recommendations of the Cadmus report and then come back with some feedback to the board. So this is, this item on the agenda is a result of that. Basically, Cadmus came with 42 recommendations, I think in four categories of four energy sustainability in the future in Chester County. And they had shortlisted those 42 into 18 that had the highest impact and had the most likelihood of, you know, being able to be realized going forward. And then the Strategic Advisory, the Sustainability Advisory Committee took those 18, and they looked at the 42 actually, but looked at the 18, boiled it down to the six, what they would judge to be germane priority initiatives that apply to East Goshen Township. And they are to encourage solar-ready guidelines for East Goshen Township to examine the practicality and the cost benefit of a power purchase agreement along with other, we're not big enough, I don't think, to do that by ourselves, we concluded. So maybe in cooperation with other third parties. Third, to streamline interconnectivity processes, one of the barriers to solar and other kinds of energy efficient systems is to make sure that we're, we can interconnect with other systems. The fourth was to pass electric vehicle-ready ordinances, just to look at those and make sure that, that our ordinances are advanced enough that we don't have any issues with EV-ready action. So the fifth is to install public charging stations for electric vehicles. And that really looks more like trying to work with businesses to encourage them to install and educating businesses because from a practical perspective, that looks like the first area we need to look before. and educating businesses because from a practical perspective, that looks like the, the first, uh, area we need to look before we start putting them in the parks and at the township building, although leading by example would be, would be great. And there, and there are state, um, grants and so on that help defer some of that cost. And then the final is lead by example in municipal facilities. Our building, um, the Public Works Building was identified by the, the Delaware Valley, uh, Council and by CADMS as, um, a building that, that could be particularly suited for, um, solar roof, um, array. And of course, you know, you'd have to do the cost benefit of that, what's the payback period and all those kinds of things. But, um, you know, it, we've, we've talked about this for a couple of years, actually, looking at the feasibility of potentially putting, um, and, uh, uh, solar array on the, on the pu, uh, Public Works Building. You know, but by looking at this motion tonight, we're not approving, doing that, we're approving, looking at it. So that's, that's really what we're trying to do here. So, um, so I'll make a motion to, uh, uh, adopt, um, um, the resolution accepting the CADMS report, which I think we already done. We done that?
I would second that.
Well, there's a motion, there's a motion at the bottom of the page, David.
Yeah.
And before you, before you make the motion, John, you had some issues today. Does satisfy what you wanted to know?
Yeah, the, I mean, the, the key thing is.
No, not John, John, John Herzog.
Oh, okay.
Well, it could be for you too, John, for that matter. He, he, he wanted a John's.
Probably we should do the motions first, but yeah, I'm satisfied that this is, uh, a take a look at resolution rather than a spend money resolution, so I'm.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, David.
So, Rick, did we, did?
I thought we did this already.
We never, we never officially, we never, the board never officially accepted the CADMS.
Alright, so.
Refer the matter to.
Accepting the report, we're not, uh, again, we're not.
I'll be damned.
Approving any steps, we're just saying, you know, we helped pay for the report and we're accepting it, we, we acknowledge we received it. Um, so I'm going to move to, uh, adopt the, the resolution accepting the CADMS report as written and acknowledge the Sustainability Advisory Committee's recommendations.
I'll second that. I'll, I'll second.
Is there any comments or questions from the board? Further ones? Uh, Susan, anybody up there? Or out there?
They're unmuted and they're, I think you're good, Marty. Yep, you're good.
Mm-hmm. Okey-doke. Thank you. Uh, all those in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Four, zero, John. Thank you. The next item is the deer management summary. I know Michelle had compla, uh, complimented Mark Gordon on this, uh, it's a very extensive report. Michelle, what, you want to say whatever you want to say again for the record?
I just thought that he did a tremendous job with compiling all this information into the various charts and all, all these summaries. It was just really very helpful and I, I just found that it was, it was a very easy to understand, um, summary. So I appreciated all the work you put into that. Thank you.
Uh, I'll make a comment, I was kind of astounded at the, at the chart, the, the deer harvest numbers, and then the vehicle accidents reported in a year. I mean, we have twenty accidents a year, uh, vehicles hitting deer. And, and then, but there has to be more than that, right? Because the deer roadkill picked up in East Ocean Township, you know, in, in two thousand and fourteen was sixty-nine deer. Uh, two thousand and seventeen, sixty-three, in two thousand and eight, eighty-one killed on, picked up in the, in the road. I mean, this is an astounding number, though.
That's not, that's what they've captured there on this report. That, that's, that doesn't mean that there wasn't other ones, David. I mean, we, we have other ones for sure.
And David, I.
I was just surprised by those numbers.
David, I have to disagree. I don't believe that every time the vehicle hits the deer, I've been in a, I've been in the car when the deer hits the vehicle.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I, I, deer hit me once, yeah.
And the dumbest animals out there.
They really are.
Yeah, I totally agree. Yeah, so, uh, I agree that the report's interesting, so, uh, I will.
Is Mark, wait a minute, is Mark Gordon here tonight?
No.
Don't think so.
Or Ricky or John? Do we, do we need a motion to accept the, uh, the, uh, alignment of the, uh, of the folks that are working the various zones?
Yeah, I was just going to make that motion.
No, that, the, the, I, right now you just need to acknowledge you see the, the, the report for last year. Okay. Then we just acknowledge the report, we don't have to make any motions, right? No, that's the next item on the agenda. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, David, we don't have to make any motions tonight, we could just save it for the next time.
Alright, well, I can make the motion.
If you're down at the seashore, you're going to have to come back.
There you go. But I will make a, a motion for, so we can have discussion around the deer management program going forward. So.
I'll, I'll second that.
So Mister Chair, when I move that we approve the twenty, uh, twenty and twenty-one deer management program resolution, number two thousand and nineteen dash twenty-four, um, and the following deer management groups to, to participate in the twenty-twenty Township archery hunting program. The Chester County Trackers will manage the Grand Oak and Mill Creek open space area. Mainline, um, whitetail managers will manage the Suppley open space areas. Uh, Keystone Archers will manage the Bow Tree and Clock Tower open spaces. And Tri-County Whitetail Management will manage the Wentworth open space area.
I would second that. Yep.
Uh, just a second, let me ask, Ricky, was that, that wasn't the one you were asking that we didn't have to do tonight, right? No, you, I was last year's report, that, so now, you're, the action you're taking now is to prove. That's fine. Okay, I just, I just, I didn't want to confuse the thing. Is there, there's, there is a second, is there any comments or questions from the board?
No.
From the audience?
Yes, I have a comment and a question.
That's Jerry. Go ahead, Jerry.
Yeah, the comment is, um, I think the program has been helpful from my own personal observations. I, I think the size of the deer herd, at least what's wandering around in my backyard, is smaller than what it used to be. And my question is, uh, can, is there something more that can be done to further reduce the size of the herd? Because, um, although there have been improvements, I think there is still room for improvement. There's still, uh, a significant amount of, uh, of damage being done by the deer.
Well, the problem, the problem, we've been through this a lot, and, uh, back ways when this thing first started. Um, there was a lot of questions like that asked, and there, there's a couple of answers to that. Number one, the north end of the township doesn't have any open space and, and there's a lot of deer at the north end of the township, uh, that migrate down periodically and go back. There's not a, they don't go a great deal of distance, I think it's five miles or something like that. But that's about as far as they go and they go back and they have, they usually stay in one place. But that's, that's one of the reasons. Uh, the other reason is, don't forget, the deer have little deers every year. And sometimes they have spring and fall. So, i- it, it's very difficult, you're always going to have deer, some amount, some amount of deer. The question that's been asked before is, when are you going to stop the program? Well, you really can't stop the program because for this, for the exact reason that you just asked the question. If you do that, uh, it's going to be very difficult to start again, number one. And number two, the deer multiply. And they're, they're, they're not as bad as rabbits, but they're, they do multiply. Uh, it's common for them to have two each times, or three, or one, depends. But three and one is not as, as prevalent as two. So, you could theoretically, the same deer could have four guys the same year, one, two in the fall and two in the spring. So, it's a, it's a problem and it's, I don't, I think we're probably where we are, we're, I, I would call, I, I call up the maintenance program now. Uh, this is, this, this is what they expect and the people, the hunters know what they're going to get and pretty much for the, and you'll see it's pretty, pretty constant for the last couple of years. So, I would say that, uh, we've, we've been very fortunate, there's been, so I remember, there's been no accidents, no problems, the people have, if there's a conver, interaction between the deer hunters and the, and our residents, they've been very, very respectful of it. And, uh, we have gotten nothing but compliments from the people. And, uh, and in the beginning, you would have never believed that was going to be the case. So, I, I, I'm, I, Mark Gordon taking it over and his staff, I think have done a great job from where we used to, Jim, Jim, um, I forget Jimmy's last name now, but he used to, he used to run the program himself, he used to be the manager or the chairman of the, of the, of that aspect of the planning commission, I guess it was. And, um, we got to turn it over to Mark Gordon, he's done a great job on it. And I appreciate your comments, Michelle, because, uh, I'm sure, I'm sure it made Mark feel pretty good about the whole thing. So, there's a lot of work that goes into this thing and, and you, you have to do certain things every week and so forth and so on. So, it's not just a, uh, finish the, you know, do the report and go on to the next year, it doesn't work that way. Uh, more, uh, Mark or John, do you want to say anything about that?
Um, no, I, I, the program is, has proved itself. Um, Chaz is, helps Mark Gordon a lot with it, with going out and verifying the property lines and the hunting lines and so forth. And we keep up the date, spraying the marks, so everybody knows where they can and can't hunt. So it's been a very positive program.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's worked really well. Okay, uh.
Well, I, I was just wondering, uh.
We made the mo.
Could we just pass along to the hunting groups that, you know, is there a way for them to hunt, to bring more hunters in, to hunt more days or something like that?
I, from what I remember, this has been a question that's been asked of them before. Uh, I understand that what they do, the people come basically when they can or when they're, you know, available. Um, it's not like they, you, you put out a schedule and it's that way forever, it's, that doesn't work that way. They, they, they commit to a schedule every week, I believe it is, and they go from there. And it's, it's not uniform across the board. So, I, I don't know how you get them to do more because they only have so many people to do something with. And the, the big group is with the Bow Tree, uh, area, which is the biggest area. And they get, usually get the maximum, uh, yield from that. So, I, I don't know what you'd do about, it's a really good question, and I don't know what you, I don't know what the answer is. I, I don't know if anybody else knows what the answer is, but if they do, it's a good time to say it because I sure now don't know it.
Well, that's what I'm referring to. I, I live in the Bow Tree development and I, I'm familiar with where the hunting grounds are. Uh, I'm just suggesting that there's a lot more deer there to be, uh, you know, to be harvested.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Could we just pass that along, please?
Sure, we can pass it along for sure. Uh, Ricky or, or Mark, or Mark Gordon or, uh, Mark Miller or Ricky or John, you want to let Mark Gordon know that? We will pass it on. And I would add, one of the challenges is, the open space we have in the north part of the township isn't big enough to actually allow people to hunt, with all, with the safety parameters and buffers the odds that we, we require. Oh, it's, it's, there's a ton of deer to come down from Maculada. I mean, I, I get, I get, I live up that way, I get asked by a lot of people about, aren't you, when are you going to do something about the deer? Well, there isn't anything to do about the deer because you can't hunt them. And, uh, they're just there, they keep growing and growing and growing. And there's an awful lot of them, and I bet you that a lot, there's a lot of people in the north part of township that have deer automobile accidents. Uh, that would be my guess because it's a lot of deer in the north end of the township.
Well, can I just ask, is there any, uh, form of contraception that can be placed out, um, for?
There's nothing that's been approved yet, uh, that we're aware of. That's the, that's the problem. There's a lot of that conversation and, and looking at different things that could have been done back in, back in the day when it, when it was first originated. I, I kind of forget some of the stuff, but it, yeah, I, there was never, as far as I know, there's no ant, contraceptives that are, that are work in, in the controlling of deer. Uh, you, you have to either kill them, you have to kill them, you have to do it with bows and arrows or do it with long rifles. And, um, ours, ours, our, our territory doesn't permit the use of rifles. And, uh, you, you can't, you can't put down the feed for them and, and make them, you know, go to the feed pile. Uh, so, it's, it's a, it's a very, very, the, it, when you catch a deer, it's, you, you are, you're a skilled individual. And, uh, these, these folks that work, work in our, our, uh, areas are very skilled people. And usually it's the, the ones that are most skilled that come here. So, uh, there is no contraceptive, it's a great idea, Michelle, but you, if you want to make some money, go ahead and invent one. You and Dan could retire, uh, uh, earlier than you thought you were going to retire.
I, I don't think that's, I think we're good.
Okay, any, uh, we got to make a, anybody else have any comments or questions upstairs? We all done?
I think we had the motion and it was seconded, so.
Yeah, I know, we're ready to take the vote. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? No, four, oh, John, thank you. Uh, the next is the recommendation, uh, for the PennDOT maintenance agreement for the new island on Paley Pike. I'm assuming anybody's going down Paley Pike realizes there's some work being done, uh, that's what we're really talking about. Ricky or John, also, do you want to talk about that and explain what's, what's going to end up, you know, being there? Well, because the island's in the, um, PennDOT right of way, we have to have a maintenance agreement, uh, for it. And this is PennDOT's form. Okay.
What, what, what are, what's going on there today with all the, with all the, with all the stuff out, out there and the change of lanes?
Well, there's, there's a couple of things. One, right now, we're in the process of forming up the island. And once the island's done, it'll be grass seeded and, uh, you know, seeded, and it'll be a grass island. And essentially, under this agreement, we have to notify PennDOT when we're going to cut the grass. And, uh, we have to cut the grass, but they're basically, we're responsible for maintenance. The other thing that's going on up and down Paley Pike is Alan Myers has started work on the trail. And that's a, done a lot of milling and earth moving and putting up, uh, a saw and erosion measure. So that's the other act on Paley Pike. How long, how, Ricky, how long is that going to be like that? Alan Myers, they're, they're looking, hope to be done sometime in September. They, they, they are known to come in and do a project and get it in and get it done, so. Good, okay. So, I've been asked that, I've been asked that question and I will use that as the answer. For anybody else, they're, they're, they're free to use what Ricky said as far as the, uh, if they're asked about what's going on. Because if you travel Paley Pike, you can't, you can't, you can't miss it. I mean, you got to, in fact, you got to move over. In fact, if you, if you're going into, uh, the restaurant down in the park here, and, and the, and the thing, are you, you, the lane, you actually back up the traffic behind you because the left-hand turn is made from what is the, uh, the, the travel lane and going towards West Chester. It's really interesting. But it's, it, it does work, I must say, but it's, it's just kind of interesting to see it. Um.
Uh, I, I have a question.
Do we, do we, go ahead, Miss.
Let me put a motion on the table for the, the issue before us, which is to execute the highway use agreement. So, I'm going to move that the Board of Supervisors improve Resolution twenty-twenty-one-ninety-three, authorizing the Board Chairman to execute the highway use agreement for the new, uh, landscape island within the Paley Pike, uh, corridor just east of the North Chester Road intersection.
Is there a second?
I'll go. I'll second that.
Okay, now.
So, the question I have.
David, wait a minute, let me get back to you, Michelle. David, it, often we talk about stuff before we make the motion because if you talk about it long enough, you're going to forget you made the motion.
Yep.
So, sometimes we just wait to the end and make the motion at that, it's okay, it's either way, but it's generally done the way, you, you know, put it on the table and then discuss it. Michelle, you want to have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, uh, why we're even putting grass in that little island. It's such a tiny little island. And is there something else that perhaps we could just, is there any like little low shrub that could actually be put in there that?
Right, right now, we're at the, we're putting grass in it. Um, maybe it has to be kind of look at doing some type of shrubbery or bush or something at some point in the future. But, uh, grass, mowing a grass island is rather, is very, uh, inexpensive. As soon as you start putting bushes in, you got a weedy mulch, that kind of stuff. So I think right now we're planning on just doing grass, but we can look at doing something more, um, you know, once everything gets done.
Okay. Uh, is there any reason why we're not just putting rocks in there instead?
The problem with the rocks, you have to go down and spray them because of the weeds and so forth and so on.
Okay.
Mark, Mark Miller has taken it as a personal challenge to get the lawnmower into that centerpiece and mow the grass. His whole job rides on mowing that grass. Um, the next item, item.
I, I have a question. I have a question.
Somebody have one up there, I'm sorry.
Um, it's Christina Morley.
Yep.
Uh, I just wanted to, to clarify, this agreement, is it for a specific period of time? I thought that that's what I just heard it was, until September?
No, the agreement runs until as long as the island's there.
Christina, until September, uh, September is the date for the, uh, uh, end of the project.
Okay, I'm just asking.
Mail project.
Okay, the re, the reason why I was asking is because on page eight, it requires that the, it looks like it requires that the township adds PennDOT as an additional insured on the general liability policy.
Yep.
And that the timeline for that. And that the timeline for that is indefinitely unless terminated.
That's what Ricky's saying.
Yeah, this, this, this is going to go on indefinitely.
Okay, so I was just wondering if you wanted to add an amendment to that language there that says that they are, uh, added as an additional insured, um, you know, for as long as this relationship exists or something like that.
They're already an additional insured on our policy because of all the other PennDOT activity in the township. So it's almost in perpetuity.
Yeah, it's like mowing, mowing, mowing a center.
Additional insured, they're already, they're already an additional.
Yeah, we, there's PennDOT all over the place. So I don't think you have to worry about PennDOT being insured.
Yeah.
They have protected themselves every time they have a project. But, uh, it's a good question you asked, but I don't think you have to worry about it.
All right, and then, um, you also might be interested, I just looked on page 10. It, it has a little statement about the right to know law that says that this agreement is subject to the right to know law and it, um, states a specific, um, uh, section of the Pennsylvania code, which I don't see attached as an exhibit, but I did look it up. And it basically, interestingly, is saying that you should, uh, submit a request to the Office of Open Records before submitting a right to know request. So I think that maybe that's a step we want to take when we get to the next agenda item.
Uh, I don't have, Ricky or John, you have an answer to that? I don't, I don't have a comment to that. I don't, I'm not, I just don't know.
Christina's right. This, this agreement is subject to a right to know, to know, to know law. Yeah, I mean.
Well, definitely, that's what I know. But the, but there's, she's talking about a two-step process.
Well, what it says is that it's, it says it's subject to the right to know law as detailed in Exhibit G, which is attached, which I don't see. Uh, as part of this, uh, agreement. I just looked all through it. I don't see an Exhibit G. Uh, it just ends at page 14 and then it goes into the drawings for the island. So then I looked up, as I'm sitting here, I just Googled that Pennsylvania code section. Since it's not part here of, of the agreement. And, uh, what it says is that before you submit a right to know request, the Office of, uh, Open Records strongly submits that you go to them first. And ask there because documents are available at no cost from the Commonwealth agencies. So all I'm just saying, I'm skipping ahead a little bit to our next agenda item. But what I'm saying is, so for this agenda item, there is no Exhibit G attached.
Okay.
Right.
Hey, Rick or John, isn't, isn't that, as I recall, isn't that the PennDOT report, that's the PennDOT's document, right? It's not ours.
Yes, and whatever attachments go with it, well, the right to know stuff is all stuff. So.
Yeah, uh, Christina, that's what I was going to say. Anytime you're dealing with PennDOT, you usually are signing whatever they tell you to sign. And you don't have a choice about it.
Right, but if it's incomplete, you can ask them to provide it.
That's right.
Uh, when, when, when it, we gave the board the, the, yeah, like I was, how many papers we, we want, we give the board all the paperwork. But, uh, right now, we got the basic agreement and all the other exhibits will be attached to it when it goes to PennDOT.
Okay, just double checking because I didn't see it here.
Unfortunately, dealing with PennDOT is not a negotiation where you can decide what agreement you want to do. Um, they're, they're, they're a bureaucracy ju- just like the other state agency.
It may be worse. Let be that as it may. Okay, thank you, thank you, Christina. Uh, David or Ricky, on this next one.
Need to vote.
Isn't this the one that David wrote a request or made a request of Carolyn Comida to get the whole report?
Marty, you need to vote on the, uh, uh, agreement. You haven't voted yet.
Oh, and the other one we just talked about, say that? Okay, uh, is, are we done? Anybody else have any comments or questions either upstairs, uh, guests or supervisors? All those in favor of the motion? Aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Four zero. Thank you. Uh, uh, thank you, Ricky. I appreciate that. I, it's one of the reasons that we, if you know you're going to have a discussion, it's good to wait. Um, isn't this the one that you asked Carolyn McKenna, Carolyn, uh, committed to get the whole report?
Yeah, here's the, the background on this is.
I mean, are we doing, uh, we're dealing with two different things, you know, the same thing with two different things. And I'm not sure we want to, we want to do this now. I leave it to you, David.
Well, I just, you know, let's, let's just address it as an agenda item. Um, the, um, the Boot Road Geophysical Survey was requested by the township uh, based on the inadvertent returns at, uh, along Boot Road near the, the Giant Supermarket and, uh, Wilson Drive. Um, and Carolyn Comida was actually helpful in putting us together with the right people um, at PennDOT to, to get this done. So PennDOT basically said, well, we'll just ask Sunoco to do it. And we said, no, that's not going to be acceptable. And PennDOT said, okay, we'll, we'll get a vendor and we'll have Sunoco pay for it, which they subsequently did. Uh, the first geo-, um, physical survey was done and it was inadequate and, and not done properly. There was a lack of communication and agreement between PennDOT, Sunoco and the vendor. Um, so then they came back and did a subsequent study. But the, the major point that I made in my email to Carolyn Comida is that we were promised by PennDOT that we would get complete copies of the surveys and we did not. Um, we got a summary document. Um, and, uh, you know, we, the, the Pipeline Task Force determined that that was inadequate. And we wanted to, we, we, we wanted to have, uh, Panoni engineers look at the report, but we weren't crazy about having them look at an incomplete summary report. We wanted to look at the full report because we want to make sure that, uh, you know, we're on our side because of Sunoco's, um, let's just say, lack of willingness to self-govern and self-report. Uh, we wanted to make sure we had our own people looking at this. And as Boot Road is a major corridor and it's used by school buses and UPS and, and Sunoco themselves with heavy equipment. Um, so that was the situation. So I, I, I read through Rick's, um, memo and, um, basically went back to Carolyn Comida in a letter to her that I copied all of you on saying, uh, we were promised a full copy of the report. Your office was promised a full copy of the report. Uh, can you help us get it? And I have not heard back from her yet. I just sent that, I think, two days ago. So that's kind of the status on this item.
She's still celebrating, David.
Yeah.
Um, this, this item F, isn't that, isn't that the, the, uh, report that you're referring to, David?
Yes.
So what, what, Ricky or David, what do you want us to do tonight? Wait to see if Carolyn Comida comes through or do you want us to approve this summary report and get them working on it?
Well, right, right now, we have the report. Well, we, we asked for three additional pieces of information. Uh, and we submitted that request to, uh, PennDOT under a right to know. I filled out the form, submitted the request, so we didn't, the township didn't incur any money in that expense. Now it has been denied and they have cited the, uh, there's a law about traffic safety studies, uh, that, that's what they cited. Kristen says we probably could get it. We could probably win it the off, win, uh, if we file an appeal to Open Records. It's going to cost a couple thousand dollars. I, being a bureaucrat from my side, I can see that PennDOT will, will appeal if we go to Open Records. If they lose it, it'll continue to appeal. So while it's only a couple thousand dollars to go to Open Records, if you're, I say, if you're not going to go through the whole thing, why don't we just send what we have to Panoni and get a report? But if you're wanting to, willing to spend the money to do, to follow up on the appeal, then we should file the appeal.
I'd like to hear other people from my recommendation.
Why aren't we waiting for Carolyn Comida to see if she gets the reports?
She, she, she may be, we may be better, she may be able to get it through political purposes as opposed to these legal purposes. That, that's.
Yeah, that would be better, wouldn't it?
Yeah, that's my recommendation would be to hold off on, on this motion until we hear back. And I'll follow up with, with, uh, Carolyn.
Yeah, I think, I think we ought to hold up too. And let, do we got a deadline? Is there a deadline facing this one?
You, you could, you could defer it tonight, but if you want to appeal, if you want to file appeal, we have to do something next Tuesday. There is, there is a clock. I think it's a twenty, so I think you, you would have to file an appeal by, you would have to decide next Tuesday. So you can push it back to next Tuesday if you want to wait.
Okay.
Absolutely. Okay, we, we have a meeting next Tuesday, I take it?
Yes.
Um, David, can you make any progress at all with Carolyn? Carolyn, if we hold off and take, take a vote next Tuesday as opposed to tonight?
Yeah, I, I can, uh, I'll follow up with, as I said, I think I sent that to, two days ago. So I'll follow up with her tomorrow.
Ricky, do you have a problem with that?
No, I, we could, we, if you want to wait, uh, as I said, I.
We just wait, if we're going to meet next week, uh, there's no reason, I don't see a reason not to wait. If David can make some, maybe, maybe, uh, find out that what's going to happen if Carolyn says, no, I'm not going to get any more or something like that, we're going to have to go ahead and do what we have to do. If she's going to get it and we have pretty certain she's going to get it, that's a whole different ballgame.
Okay, well, then we'll just put it up next week's agenda.
Yep.
That's what I think.
We'll just table this. Do we need to make a motion?
No, no, you just table it till next week.
Okay.
I have a question.
Who said that?
Christina.
Okay, Christina.
Rick, Rick, I'm just asking, why, uh, why do you think that it would cost several thousand dollars to file an appeal? Because as I'm looking on the Office of Open Records, uh, website, it says, if your request is denied, you can file an appeal with the Office of Open Records. There is no fee and you do not need an attorney.
Right, but you're right, there is not. But if we're, if, if we're going to file an appeal, I would think the township would want to have his, um, lawyer write, write the brief. Because I'm, I, I know a little bit about right to know, enough to get in trouble. But I also know that when you start wanting to file appeals, that you involve your solicitor.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it gets a little bit tricky. If, if Carolyn can, Comida can come through for us, we're better off all the way around because it's not going to cost us any money. The question is going to become if we, what to do next week if she's not going to be able to come through.
That's true, but I just want it to be said on the record that it's not going to cost you any money either way. It, it literally is not. It says it in black and white on this website. So I don't think that that should be a defining, uh, factor.
Yeah, but you're assuming that we don't use lawyers. You're, you're assuming, you're making assumption that we may not want to make.
Well, all I'm saying is that you lose nothing. You lose nothing by submitting the, an appeal, whether it's written by a lawyer or not. I mean, you're not going to get the information if you don't submit an appeal because you don't want to spend money on a lawyer. And you're not going to get the information or you, you may not get the information because you submit a poorly written appeal. But you may also get the information if you submit an appeal and it works.
Well, Rick, I think what Ricky said is PennDOT is going to, if they lose, they're going to keep appealing. And once you get into the second appeal, that's when you start getting into a lot of money. Isn't that what you said, Rick?
That's what I'm suggesting, yes.
Yes.
Well, even, even the first appeal.
That's what happens.
You're going to want a proper.
You got deep pockets, you got PennDOT with deep pockets, they keep going after you. Do you, do they think you're going to run out of money, so to speak? So the problem isn't the first time. The problem is, one of the reasons you hire a lawyer is because you know that you're going to have to, you're going to go through another appeal at least.
Well, I would just hope that you are not, um, I would hope that you take, uh, you, you take heed of the many different, um, residents who have represented themselves pro se at the PUC and have successfully argued many cases. And they did not have, you know, rep- representation as they filed all of their briefs. They did all their research. And I think that you should give yourselves a little bit more credit in what your capabilities are. I, I think that you have very good resources. What wasn't mentioned here, and, and I'll just bring it up very briefly because I know that we want to move on, is that I also submitted a right to know request to PennDOT for a lot of, some of the same information, but mine was a little bit more extensive um, and far-reaching. And I did not get a denial letter yet, but if I do and they're citing the exact same, um, traffic study, uh, code there, I am definitely going to file an appeal because it is clear to me that, you know, this was not a traffic study. It was, had nothing to do with crash or accident data or anything like that. I think that they're, uh, the code that they're trying to hide behind is pretty flimsy. And I have every confidence that I can write something that's just as good, so.
Um, if I can say something, um, I want to say that, um, Christina's right. Um, there really is no harm in filing an appeal. And, uh, this is, this is something that I think that we need to do. It doesn't preclude us from using a lawyer in the future. And so I would, I, I would, I would like to see us at least file an appeal.
That, that's okay, Michelle, and that, that's fine. Uh, and if the board wants to do that, that, you know, it's perfectly acceptable. However, what Ricky has really been saying, and I think it's in the material that we have, that, that PennDOT will keep going. If, if we were to win the first round, PennDOT would appeal that. And once you get that appeal, then you're starting to spend a lot of money. It's not the fact that you would get the.
That's the reason why the first appeal has to be written properly. Because if it's written properly and our arguments are strong, they may not be able to appeal, uh, because I agree with Christina and, and Rick made the same comment in his memo that the, the reason for denial, uh, as Kristen Camp has also told Rick, is nonsense. So, um, you know, I think if you, if you do a strong appeal and you win, then I think their lawyers have to sit around and say, uh, you know, we're not going to, we're not going to win this if we go forward because they made a strong argument, uh, on the first appeal. So that's kind of where I'd like to see it going. But having said all of that, um, let's see if Carolyn can get us a copy.
Yeah, I agree. But, but we, but the, the simple fact of the matter is, it, it, it's going to require some discussion next week if, if Carolyn doesn't come through.
Yep.
Yeah, let's go, let's go step by step and wait till next week and see what Carolyn can do.
That's exactly right. Well, uh, he'll know sometime before next week, it's, it's here. Hopefully it's a week's out so we have, we know in a packet that we get.
She's good at taking our calls, so.
Yeah, she is. Uh, her problem is, unfortunately for us, we're going to be losing her.
Right, and she's also running for a higher profile, uh, position now and she may be less willing to rock the boat. So I would just be prepared for that.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I've already thought about that. She's been very good to us, I, I must say. So, uh, I would think if she can help, she can help. David's the right man to talk to her too, by the way. Uh, the next item is, I don't think we have to do anything, right, Rick? We just table it and move on?
We'll, it's tabled.
Okay, the Penny's Pipeline thing to me seems to be they're, they're either going to give us or take from us, take from our pipeline, so to speak, uh, oil or gas. Um, I'm not sure what, do you, can you explain to, for everybody's benefit if this is going to have, other than either getting fuel or not getting it, is there anything else that's going to happen as a result of them doing what they're planning to do that affects down here?
The, the weird thing about this, Marty, is that the Adelphia, you know, has a certificate of, of need um, for a pipeline that, that we thought was at capacity. And that's, that was their argument, right? Now all of a sudden, you know, Penny says, well, we, we'd like to hook up and use some of that capacity. So, you know, we have questions. The Pipeline Task Force Committee has questions and, and Rick outlined some of those questions in.
Yeah, I saw that. They're very good. My question of whether you should do it or not, I'm just asking what, what, what the effect is.
Yeah, so I mean, where's all this capacity come from if, if, if the Adelphia Pipeline was already full? And does this mean anything different? Is it going to increase the PSI in the pipeline? Is it going to, you know, is it going to always be odorized? Is it, uh? Is it, uh, you know, are they going to require any new construction that they might not have required? Because Adelphia always told us in these Goshen that we weren't going to see any new construction other than potential maintenance if they found out any problems. Does this create any new problems for us where they might have to come in and do construction? And what's the impact on the blowdown valve that's going to be, uh, rebuilt? Does it impact that at all in any way? And these are just questions we don't know the answers to, but we sure would like to know the answers to.
Okay, I, 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 I mean, all, everything that the pipe, that you and, you just described and the, the task force did is, to me, legitimate questions. And I think that the questions on here, as I read them, would be questions you would want to know. Uh, Ricky, there is no thir-, is there a third party involved that they're getting, they're getting gas from? That's just actually going through and it, and it, and it's really neutral to, to Adelphia?
All, all, all we know is that they're proposing interconnection between Adelphia, uh, I guess it's Columbia and, um, Columbia Gas and Adelphia. And, and I believe they're trying to get around the fact that they can't put the pipeline in New Jersey. So rather than put a new pipeline in, or at least as a, for phase one, they're going to utilize an existing pipeline to move the, uh, to move it out.
Basically, New Jersey won't let them run through New Jersey. Uh, so they're, uh, another jury rig of, of, uh, you know, getting natural gas to mark us up.
So as of, I guess, when I last looked at it Friday, they, DEP website has the letter that Adelphia has submitted. And they have had some technical reviews on some other applications, but they have, as near as I can figure, DEP has not responded or posted any information about this amendment, so.
And it could be argued, um, that this is not an amendment to an existing approval. It should be, uh, you know, we can be argued that they should resubmit a new application to do this, not modify an existing application because of the scale of this, uh-
That is definitely a port that I agree with.
Yeah, well, this change, so.
Um, can I just ask whoever's clicking something that it's echoing? Please stop clicking it. It sounds like a pen, sorry. It's hard to hear some of, some of, um, what everybody's had to say.
I, 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 I didn't catch what you said, Michelle.
I said that there has been a lot of clicking. It sounds like a pen. And it's been hard to understand what other people are saying when that's happening.
Oh, really? I didn't have that problem, but it's really annoying if you had. I, I don't know where it's coming from.
Doesn't matter.
John didn't say, John didn't say anything, so it's not him.
So, so Marty, the question for the board is, uh-
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute, Michelle hasn't heard anything.
No, I've heard some of it, and I, I, I'm able to read and I, I'm able to comprehend what this issue is, so go ahead.
So, so the question for the board is, uh, am I authorized to submit these questions to DEP on behalf of the township?
Yeah, I, I mean, David, is that the motion?
Yeah, we need a motion to do that, Rick.
Yeah.
Yes, because the way the commission's task force set up is you have to approve whatever they-
Yeah, they recommend us to approve.
So I'm, I, I'll make a motion, um, that Rick submit these questions to, um, is this going to, to the DEP, right?
Yeah.
To the Department of Environmental, the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, uh, that the, uh, questions, uh, recommended by the, uh, Pipeline Task Force.
I'd second that.
Okay, is there any further questions from the board or from the audience? Christina, you, are you, are you silent now?
Uh, well, I wrote those four questions. I just wanted to ask, David, did you want to add a question to DEP about, uh, whether this would trigger a new, uh, you know, whether it's an entirely new project versus just a modification?
Yeah, this is Jerry. I had the same question. I was wondering if the board would be willing to do that.
I would think so. I thought, you know, I read this thing. I thought that was in here in some fashion, but maybe I'm wrong. I, I think it's, I think it's a legitimate question to ask.
I think so too. I think we should add that, uh, ask for, uh, their interpretation or justification of why this is a modification versus a new application because of the scale of the change. I think that's a great idea.
Add that as a fifth question, and then I think we'd be good to go.
Uh, David, and you're going to have to modify the motion to include that, to ask for that also to be included in the, uh-
Okay, uh, I'll amend, amend the emotion. I move to amend the emotion to include a fifth question, um, regarding the application to DEP and whether it should be a complete new application versus a modification to an existing application.
And I'll second the amendment.
Okay, anybody have any comments or questions now?
We have to vote on the, we have to vote on the amendment and then vote on the, uh, motion, right?
No, you modified the motion.
You modified it.
No, you modified the motion. I was trying to think of the words. That's right, Ricky. No, it's a one-step process. So all we have to do is take a motion. All those in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Four zero, John, or, four zero, John, thank you. Um, that, 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 that last one, I think, is the one that's really the best question of all, to tell you the truth. That's, that's, that's my non-professional, like, professional opinion.
Thank you, Marty.
You're welcome. And now I'm not going to come to the task force either. Um, we have gotten down to the grinder, uh, which is, Mark, do you want to talk about your grinder? Or do we know enough about it from the other day? Some of us were talking about it anyway. I guess that was, I guess that was David and I in the pre-meeting. Uh, do you want to talk about it, so people understand what the necessity is?
Uh, yeah, we currently have a, what is it called, an eager beaver chipper. It's, uh, ten years old. It was due to be replaced this year. We were going to defer it to next year. But unfortunately, this last storm that we have had, um, we broke the jaws on it to open and close. And we also ran a lit, or a log through it, which had a one-inch iron pin, and it did damage to the disc. Um, so I did reach out to the vendor who we looked at back in October. He said that he would, uh, honor the price that he quoted us back in October. And the trade-in will still go as submitted.
So just-
I can, I can add to it, I can add to this. If, if they use chippers like it's going out of style when they have storms, and that's probably not going to be the, that may be the worst storm we get, but it's not going to be the only storm we get before this year's out. And I, did, did you quote, I think it's twenty-six truckloads of, of chips they took out. Uh, so you, you obviously have to use a chipper. So the, the question now is that there's the money, has been set, has been fully allocated for the piece of equipment. It was going to be deferred as we had suggested based on the financials. However, Mark is saying it really can't wait because of, of the need to do other things with it, uh, that may take place in this next year. So that's what we're facing. I, I, for one, uh, have seen this thing, have seen the clippers, or the chippers in action. And without them, they're dead in the water. So I, I, I would say that it's, it's necessary. And if anybody has any question about the, um, about the expense or whatever, uh, they, or even the use of it, they should ask Mark now because we're going to have to make a, a decision that is different from what we did, we made before. So anybody have any questions or you want to make a motion? I would, I would hold off on a motion, David.
How, how much is this going to cost?
The new one?
Yeah, what's the new one going to cost?
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven thousand? And what's it, what's it cost to repair the thing?
Oh.
Time and material, uh, I don't know. It's going to be time and material. Because they got to split the machine in half, pull the disc apart, and order a new disc and new knives.
Who's, Mark, who's doing the work? Your guys or somebody else?
No, I got to send out the modern. I can't do it. It's, it's, it's too, the tolerance is, it's not-
This is the second time it's happened though, right?
Pardon?
This isn't the first time you've had to repair it.
No, 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 we had, the jaws went out before on it, and we did repair it. But right now, what they're doing to make it work is, and it's not, it's, I'm, it's not safe. They're using digging bars and they're using the chain on the backhoe and they're picking the jaws up manually and then trying to throw the log in there. And it's just, it's not a good situation. Um, so like I said, I reached out to the vendor to see if they had any. Um, they, he does have one left on the lot into the storm. Uh, he said he would put it on hold till tomorrow if we, if we can get it, that's fine. If we can't, then I'll have to figure out something else.
You can always rent one, can't you?
The problem, no, John, the problem is trying to rent one. They're all out. It's like trying to get, you know, it's like trying to get a snow shovel in a snowstorm.
What other, uh, expenses have to go with this? So if the truck, if the chipper itself is fifty-seven and some change, we don't have to trick it out with any lights or equipment or anything, but just have to get left with everything?
No, 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 that, Michelle, that's parked in our shop, ready to go Wednesday morning, Wednesday afternoon or Thursday morning when the next storm hit. There's no other side costs or anything, that's it.
Okay.
I know, I, 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 I think that unfortunately, this limits what we can do in emergencies or in, in storms to the point where if we don't do it, we're making a mistake. And I realize what we said before. And, but there's just some things, there's just some things that, that fit the need category as opposed to want category. And you just got to do it and to keep the place running.
And, and I would just, I would just also observe, you know, when we repair stuff, that's an operating cost. When we replace stuff, it's a capital, you know, it's fully depreciated. So the money is there to replace it now, uh, in the capital reserve fund. But the money isn't there to, to repair it. So it's, um, you know, it, it, one of those things where, you know, an asset hits the end of its useful life. It's cheaper, it's just like adding a couple of extra years, trying to add extra years to your computers. Um, in the long run, it's going to save you more money on maintenance.
Anybody else have any comments or questions before we make the motion?
So-
Either on the board or up in the audience?
I have, I have a question.
David, you, oh, you have a question, Michelle?
I have a question.
No, my, my comment is it's fully depreciated. It was scheduled to be a capital expense in twenty-twenty. Um, we're, we're using-
What do you, what do you mean depreciate?
Keep the initial chipper together and I support replacing it.
What do you mean depreciate?
It means, um, John, it means that, um, when, when we say depreciated, um, you're, you're right.
Wait, no, wait a minute, now, don't, don't, don't blow smoke up my butt here. Depreciation is an IRS term that's used in federal taxes. We don't pay federal taxes.
Right, you're right, you're right, you're right. There's not a depreciation line item in our financial statements. It's absolutely correct. Um, but what we do, and what, if you have a sinking fund for your capital assets, um, and any, any municipality that's, you know, for looking, does this, is we squirrel away, um, you know, we depreciate all of our assets in our, on our capital, in our fixed asset worksheet, um, a little bit per year, so that when they hit the end of their useful life, there's sufficient money in the cap reserve fund to replace without having to borrow money, um, and just be able to pay for them in cash. So we're planning for their eventual replacement in the cap reserve fund. So my point is just that if we have to, if we have to fix it, you know, that's, that comes out of an operating, of, of our operating fund. If we replace it, that's from money that we've been saving over the last ten years for this very purpose. Does that make, does that make sense?
Yeah, I understand what you're doing.
Why can't, why can't you move money from one fund to the other?
Well, I mean, uh, that's, uh, well, that, that's a larger question. Um, I guess theoretically we could, um, but it's, it's, it's just, I said, is, is that, um, you know, it, it's the same way as getting, having a car. At some point, it's cheaper to get a new car than it is to keep repairing an old car, um, um.
That's a bad example. I, 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 I'm sorry I'm being argumentative, but a two-year-old car is the best buy. To buy a new car, you drive it off the lot and you lose five thousand dollars. Um, at, at some point, I think there has to be a pushback when, when we, we keep getting these requests to buy stuff.
Oh, okay.
Well, I think to, I think, uh, John, tomorrow, you'll hear a lot more about that. But, and, and, and investigating this myself, I, I, and this is just my personal, well, Don's, John's, or David's opinion is pretty much mine. And I, I certainly didn't talk to David about it. But to me, it, it's a function that they have, it's a piece of equipment that they have to have to do their job. And if they don't have it, uh, these storms and trees on the street are going to be a mess. So I, I, I think there's an obligation to do it. Uh, I know that the thing has been repaired before. I, whether or not you can transfer money, because if we were to do what you're talking about, you'd have to transfer money from the capital account back into the operating account. I don't know if you can do that or not. But be that as it may, we can find that out. But regardless, I, I, I would rather spend the capital money than I would the operating fund money. I mean, because what do you do-
I'll have my say. I'll lay back.
Pardon me?
We're trying to run a township and we need to run it with tools that we need. This is a necessary tool. I can, I can understand questioning frivolous spending, but this isn't frivolous.
No. I mean, you got, you got to remember, we're sort of like the fire, I look, I look at us sort of like the fire coming. We can never go out of business. Because you could, you, and, and, and it's a hell of a thing to have to say. But if, if you, if worse comes to worse, you can always raise taxes. Now, I'm, don't get me wrong, I'm not sugge-, I'm not suggesting that it's the solution to, but the, that's what people will tell you. You're always going to be in business. So sometimes you ju-, I, I agree with David, there's certain things you need to use and you just have to bite the bullet and hope the hell it works out. And, and this seems to be, to me, one of them. And, uh, you go, you go from there. Uh, you, I, I, we have run a pretty tight ship in this place and have a lot of money, uh, that we have to work with. But it's going to go as faster than it came in because of the, of the, of the cost of things. And I, I, I just, we have a great public works department. I, I, I think we owe it to them. I, I don't think we should ever do anything that's a frivolous in nature. But if it's something that they need, truly need, and you believe they truly need it, then you get, you, you, you have the money, you, you, you spend the money and, and hope for the best. That's what I think.
For what's worth right now, we're, we're dead in the water. Um, I got, and I still have trees that I got to go out and chip. You know, I got stuff in the parks that came down on Paley Pike. I got stuff over in Marydale, and I got stuff, I got called night for stuff up on Dickens Lane. So it's like, it hasn't stopped, so.
And thunder's, and the weather's predicting thunderstorms for Thursday.
Yep.
All right, well, I'll back off, but I, I'm still uncomfortable with it.
Well, I'm not exactly comfortable with it, but I, I, I think, I think it's, uh, it's one of those things you just have to do.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we purchase an Intimidator nineteen X PC Rush Bandit from Modern Equipment and Sales for fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars, net of trade-in of the existing twenty-ten Bush Bandit, uh, based on the, uh, bids that we got.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Um, is there any more comments or questions from anybody? All those in favor of the motion?
Um, did the public, wait, did the public get an opportunity?
I, I, I-
Yeah, they're unmuted. They can, they can speak up.
They can speak up, I, I, I-
Yes, they're unmuted.
I, I did it such a way that I thought they were, Christina is not bashful.
I'm fine with it. I'm fine with it.
And I also didn't get a chance to ask a final question. Is there any estimate? I had asked yesterday if there was an estimate on that repair. And I want to know if there is an actual estimate on that repair at this time.
The jaws are going to be about thirty-five hundred dollars plus labor. The center of the machine is strictly time and material. I have no idea what it's going to cost once they get in there. I, I don't know, Michelle, to be honest with you. It's not going to be cheap, I can tell you that right now.
Okay.
You, 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 anybody opposed? We, the, the favors have voted for it, uh, at least the two of us.
Okay, so-
You guys have to vote.
So I'm going to say no.
Okay.
Well, Michelle, I'll, I'll go along with yes. Um, if, if Mark Miller says he needs it, um, Michelle, I'll, I'll go along with yes. Um, if, if Mark Miller says he needs it, um, he gets a benefit of the doubt at this point. So I'll say yes.
Okay, three to one. John?
All right.
Thank you. Okay. It's getting dark in here all of a sudden. I forgot where I was. Where's my, where's my computer? Oh, thank God.
Marty, any other matter?
Any other matter? David, you do have any other matter? I know David does.
I do have an any other matter. Um, Mr. Chair, we interviewed, um, Mary Kruger to join the, um, Sustainability Advisory Committee. And I'd like to make a recommendation that she be added to the Sustainability, the Sustainability Advisory Committee. And if you want to do a consent agenda, uh, we had previously interviewed Jeff O'Donnell, and his request is to move from the Sustainability Advisory Committee and join the Futurist Committee, and he asked support from the committee to do that. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve Mary Kruger as a member of Sustainability Advisory Committee and Jeff O'Donnell as a member of the Futurist Committee.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there comments or questions from anybody, from the audience? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Nay. Four zero on that, John. Uh, what else we got? We got anybody else with any other matter? Ricky, you got any or John?
That's it.
Uh, is there any public comment up there in the peanut gallery?
No.
You guys good up there?
Fine.
Christina, you're fine?
I am fine.
Oh, that's a beautiful thing to hear. Uh, okay, we're done. Uh, I would enter, there's no liaison reports tonight. I would, uh, there is a couple of correspondence reports. Ricky or John, do you want to go over them? And we also got one, no, wait a minute, we also got one attaboy for Mark, uh, from the Barones for the work that he and, he, he and his crew did cleaning up the, uh, tree that fell, I guess, fell on his, on his property.
Yeah.
So now, John, you don't have to feel so bad. John, you got an attaboy. Uh, okay, okay, Ricky, go ahead.
No, you have a, uh, from a Florin's, a little note they stuck in their, uh, for the customer service, uh, continued service, and obviously the, uh, thing from the Barones for the tree that, uh, was in a right-of-way that Mark last cleaned up.
Is anybody have any comments or questions for Ricky? There's no motion to take.
No.
Nope.
Anybody have any comments or questions? No? Okay, um, and there's no, you guys up, our guests have no comments or questions either?
None from me.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion for German.
So moved?
A second.
A second? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Four, four oh.
Have a nice night, everybody.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, everybody.
For those that are interested, we'll see everybody at, um, ten o'clock tomorrow. Uh, Susan, uh, what, what times are yours, you're going to be able to log in?
I usually open it up fifteen minutes before, so nine forty-five.
Okay, nine, nine forty-five, right?
Yes.
Okay.